From a closed session, at this point in time in our agenda, we have the emotion. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of going in the closed session at the beginning of the meeting as they close the end of the meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
If we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. If we will go back to the minutes, we have minutes here of September the 6th and September the 19th, 2011. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as previously presented?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is C1, is the recognition, for the Department of Social Services, recognition for many years of service to, that Mrs. Betty Jean Pruitt has served. I would ask, she is not here tonight, she's unable to make it here tonight, I would ask that Mr. The Director, Mr. Ben Rose, to come forward and receive the plaque on her behalf. Ladies and gentlemen, Betty Jean Pruitt has served in our community in many different aspects. I know that she's been a leader in many different volunteer and nonprofit organizations, and she has served six years with the Department of Social Services. Many of those years, she served as chairman, or chairperson, for that board, and has done a tremendous amount of work and good for the community, and we wish her the best, and we want to give her recognition for the dedicated service to Cabarrus County Social Service Board, August 15th, 2005 through June 30th, 2011. I'd like to present that to Mr. Rose. Thank you. At this time, we have, excuse me, we have informal public comments, and at this time, I would call on Mrs. Evelyn Barbie, if you would like to come up and discuss with us. Good evening.
My name is Evelyn Barbie. I am from 9668 Ravenscroft Lane in Concord, and I'm a participant in the Government 101 class, and I just wanted to tell the board that I am very delighted to be in the class, it's very informational. I'm not from the area, and I've learned quite a bit of what's going on in Cabarrus County, and I'm very delighted.
Thank you, Mrs. Barbie. The next we have is Mr. Jason Osterich, Osterreich. Jason, if you'll please come forward.
My name's Jason Osterreich. I live at 800 Town Creek Place in Concord, and I came to speak with you about the Schedule of Values at the last commission meeting, and I wanted to come back and talk about that again. First, I wanted to commend you on your rejection of the stimulus funds. I think that by that action, the county is emphatically stating that it is attempting to do its part to rein in out-of-control spending. Leadership must start somewhere, and I'm glad that it has started in Cabarrus County. I do note, though, that at the same time, the commission is condemning out-of-control federal spending, out-of-control spending at the county level is now driving out-of-control tax increases. I ask you, will you apply the same fiscal principles that you unanimously voted for in terms of the federal government to our budget here locally? This Schedule of Values is still nothing more than a tax increase on the citizens of Cabarrus County. As noted in your last commission meeting, the residential base rate went up 18% to match the housing price increase in 2008, but even with the additional $2 reduction, has come down only 4%, despite a 15% decrease in home prices. At your last meeting, Mr. Weisner stated that the index was based on building cost, not on home sale prices. However, at your work session, in announcing a minimal $2 reduction, Mr. Weisner stated, in explaining to him, meaning me, Jason, how we did go about it, we noticed that in the past few months, the price of single-family homes has continued to drop slightly, and that's where we came up with the $68. This statement shows that the base rate is, of course, tied to market prices. In addition to the reduction for market values announced, the rate contains a major overstatement in construction costs. When I met with Mr. Weisner, I noticed that one of the ways they came up with the cost per square foot is to look at home sales in the last period of time, subtract out some of the things that are add-ons after they come up with the square footage. So basically, what they do is come up with a generic square footage, and then put add-ons on after the fact. Some of the add-ons were included in the generic square foot calculation, meaning that they were counted to come up with the base rate, and then they were added on again, so they were being double-counted. And Mr. Weisner told me that he was going to fix that, but he didn't fix it, obviously, because he said that the base rate reduction was for market prices, not for this miscalculation. I do note specifically that, at the time I met with him, he said, "I could move the base rate up $2 or down $2, and we would still get to the same value, because we use multiple factors to get to 100% of market value. So if we move down on the base rate, we would adjust other factors up to get the same number." I find it ironic that, after he made that statement to me, the base rate was decreased exactly $2.
Thank you, Jason. Next we have is Mrs. Deborah Greer.
Hello, my name is Deborah Greer. I live at 28 Barbie Road Southwest in Concord. I'm here to speak on behalf of We the People, North Carolina. We the People, North Carolina, Inc. speaks in opposition to the adoption of the 2012 Schedule of Values. Zillow.com is reporting that the median house price is nearly $169,600, down 8.2% from a year ago, and off nearly 30% from the top of the market in 2006. Breaking news, the housing market still stinks. According to online real estate firm Zillow.com, house prices across the nation fell 3% in the first quarter of the year, and were down 1% in March from February, the 57th consecutive monthly drop. The median house price is now $169.6, down 8.2% from a year ago, and off nearly 30% from the top of the market in 2006. In the category of "it can get worse," Zillow anticipates that prices could slide another 7% to 9% from this point, and that the elusive bottom to the housing market will not come until 2012 at the earliest. House prices have declined from peak levels at the height of the housing boom, according to a range of measures. Prices are approaching trend levels from the 1990s, adjusted for changes in mortgage interest rates and income growth. Price stabilization, with its positive implications for reducing foreclosures, will be a critical factor in the reduction of unsold inventories. The Tax Administration Department has suggested a reduction in property values from the current $71.5, $71.50 per square foot, to a downward-adjusted $68 per square foot, which represents a 16% decline in the prevailing market. Considering the above excerpts from two different sources, a 16% reduction is nowhere close to accurately reflecting the 30% decline which has already been experienced, and an additional 7% to 9% decline which is projected to continue into 2012. It is our position that the additional reductions in the per-square-foot price should be used, and a newly revised Schedule of Values be generated for the 2012 property reevaluation. By doing this, the citizens of Cabarrus County will have a much more accurate valuation of their property values as they relate to the current real estate market situation. In addition, we are opposed to the acceptance of the 2012 Schedule of Values as it relates to the increase in property tax from .63 cents per hundred now, to a projected 70.5 cents per hundred starting in 2013. We were promised by this Board of Commissioners that if we voted to accept the 1/4 cent sales tax increase, this would not happen. Though We the People, North Carolina stood as the lone voice in opposing the sales tax, the small number of citizens who responded to the special election voted to authorize that sales tax as requested. Now, as shown, just a few months ago in your projected five-year budget, we are looking at the probability of an increase in the property tax rate. Because of the property values in Cabarrus County having declined, there will be a decline or shortfall in the amount of taxes received by the county because of these lowered property values. We have heard that by increasing the tax rate from .63 cents per hundred to 70.5 cents per hundred, the county will have a revenue...
We have three minutes.
I'm sorry. Am I over three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
One question I have for you. When you looked up the Zulu, that, Zillow, that is for the nationwide, correct? That is for nationwide.
I don't know if the, if they're, the one I see for mine, my house is for my house.
What I'm saying is, when you were talking about the percentages and all of that, that was for the nationwide, is that correct?
For the average decline?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. That's nationwide, isn't it?
Across the nation, 3%, 3%.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have is Mr. Ronnie Long.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Vice Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name's Ronnie Long. I live at 4140 Brownwood Lane here in Concord. I am president of We the People. I'd like to acknowledge several of our group who are here with me tonight. If you all would please stand up, just so they'll know who we are. On behalf of We the People, we would like to take this opportunity to commend our Board of Commissioners for the stand you took last month, when you rejected a grant proposal for the winterization of property here in Cabarrus County. We understand that was a hard, and in some people's minds, wrong decision. We the People believe that your decision was the right one, and also commend Commissioner Carruth for his further statement that our community and our churches should step up and take the lead for these types of projects. Even though we are all facing hard financial times, and our financial abilities to donate have been diminished, we can still donate our time, our effort, and our labors to benefit those who are less fortunate than we may be. This Board has exemplified a new attitude of cooperation and understanding. Many of us in the private sector see that you are beginning to hear our cries for relief from the burdens of government, and are taking positive actions to change the way this county does business. For that, we are extremely grateful. You have begun a journey in a new direction with a new attitude, and building on those brave, positive steps and actions which you took last month, We the People are asking you to continue that same kind of bravery and leadership as you take even more steps towards governing the way Cabarrus County citizens are telling you that they want the business of our county handled. We would like to thank you for acknowledging the fact that the business of governing belongs to the citizens, and that many of us have awakened from our slumber, and are now taking our rightful place beside you as, together, we go about the people's business. With that in mind, We the People feel the need to speak in opposition to three items of new business on tonight's Board of Commissioners' agenda. There are the proposed Carolina Thread Trail, the school board's request to use the QSCB contractor sales tax, and the adoption of the 2012 Schedule of Values. We are opposed to spending of over $71 million on a greenway through Cabarrus County because of three major reasons: spending borrowed money, future maintenance costs, conversion of private land ownership to public. We're also opposed to the conversion of money intended to help pay down the more than $500 million school bond debt to new spending projects, thus putting the citizens even deeper in debt. And we are opposed to the acceptance of the 2012 Schedule of Values as it relates to the increase in property tax from .63 cents per hundred, now to a projected 70.5 cents per hundred, starting in 2013. We were promised by the county commissioners that if we voted to accept 1/4 cent sales tax, this increase would not happen.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Next is Mr. Walter Smiley.
My name is Walt Smiley, 4720 Hendricks Court in Concord, and I'm with We the People Incorporated, and we're speaking in opposition to the proposed Carolina Thread Trail. After hearing the proposal by the Parks Department Resolution of Support for a Carolina Thread Trail DOT Tiger Grant Application during the Board of Commissioners' Work Session of 10 to 2011, in researching this matter, We the People must stand up and speak out in opposition to this expenditure of over $17 million for this specific project. We oppose this request for three reasons. First, the project does not pass our basic needs test. Is there a need by the general public of Cabarrus County for the expansion of the additional of the greenway system that currently exists? The short answer is no, especially not at this particular time due to the cost as it relates to our current local, state, and national economic situation. Second, this project proposes the use of a federal grant and is ruinously being promoted that is not costing the citizens of Cabarrus County anything. This is not completely true on at least two fronts. First, federal grant money does not magically appear. It comes out of the pockets of taxpayers like me, you, and those people behind me. The federal government is currently borrowing at least .43 cents of each dollar it spends, therefore, it's spending money it simply does not have, which makes no common sense. Second, the future cost to our citizens for the ongoing maintenance and upkeep has not been identified, nor has a source other than taxpayer money been identified to pay these expenses. Third, this project is part of a much larger plan to convert land from private ownership to government-owned and controlled land as outlined in the UN document titled "United Nations Sustainable Development, United Nations Conference on Environment and Development" held in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, June 3rd through 14th, 1992, subtitled Agenda 21. As reported by the World Net Daily posted October 7, 2011, "The New World is Order: The Transformation of Government by Henry Lamb Warns of Agenda 21 Coming to Your Community." The Department, this is from Henry Lamb's article. "The Department of Transportation and Environment Protection Agency also have grant programs that promote the implementation of Agenda 21 Sustainable Development Recommendations. Perhaps more than any other influence, Agenda 21 is responsible for transforming government from a servant of the people to the masters of the people. Agenda 21 is the art growth of a fundamental transformation philosophy established in 1976 at the United Nations Conference on Human Settlements. That conference adopted a document which said, 'Land cannot be treated as an ordinary asset controlled by individuals and subject to the pressures and inefficiencies of the market. Private land ownership is also a principal instrument of accumulation and concentration of wealth, and therefore contributes to social injustice. Public control of land use is therefore indispensable.'" And that's the end of his quote. In other words, the UN believes the government knows...
You can finish this talk.
Okay. In other words, the UN believes that government knows better how to use our land than we do, and they want to take away our property rights and control that land.
Mr. Smiley, you said that we're, you realize this county is not borrowing, the county government is not borrowing $70 million for the Thread Trail.
Where's it coming from? It's got to come from somewhere.
Well, you said that we're borrowing the money, and that's not what's on tonight. Did you realize that?
Let me see.
When you said that the county's...
Says it will, you know, says must, says we're going to spend $17 million.
Well, the county's not spending any money.
County's not, somebody's coming up with the money.
Right. And another thing is, so you're saying that the Carolina Thread Trail is part of Agenda 21?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
But what we are saying, the $17 million, whether it comes from the county, state, or federal, it's still coming of our tax dollars.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is Mrs., I'm sorry if I'm incorrect in this, it's Mr. or Mrs. Bobby Crawford? Mrs. Crawford?
No pressure. You can move that down, ma'am.
First of all, I didn't even know I was going to talk tonight, so this is, it may sound like I'm rambling.
Take your time.
I'm 780 Archdale Drive, Concord, living Farm Hill Development. My taxes were raised in 2008. I was appraised at $90,000. My taxes were $1,032. Then I was reassessed at $179,000. Taxes are now $3,127. My problem is, they said that they anticipated that we would sell commercial. We are not commercial, we are residential. We cannot be tax-commercial, which we are. The country acres was raised 52%. We were raised 200%. Again, we are all in double wides, single wides, been there 30 years. Places are falling apart, but Kannapolis wants us, and I will quote this, "tall, striking buildings as they leave the exit ramp to head towards the gateway of Kannapolis." Personally, I don't care how tall those striking buildings are, as long as they don't force me out by raising my taxes so high that all of us on Social Security can't pay our taxes. I think that's all I wrote down. Oh, out on the front, a man passed away. He is not allowed, his daughter is not allowed to put a residential place back on that property. It has to be a commercial. We are covered under a covenant that says that nobody can put commercial on our property unless we all sell out, but yet, somebody is stopping her from putting property back there. She just has to pay taxes, try to sell it commercial, and hope one of these days, we all sell out. I'm done. You got anything?
Yeah, you, I wanted to catch, you were comparing yourself, or y'all's subdivision to country acres?
Yeah, they went up 52%. When I called the representative, they said that we were across from the condos, and that's why we were raised so high. I said, "Excuse me, do not make me do your job for you. I am not across from the condos."
My question, my question was, was going to be, where is country acres in relationship to Farm Hills? Is it the side...
Across the interstate, over by YMCA.
Okay.
Over by Athrun Ridge.
Okay, so country acres is not next door or adjacent to Farm, from Farm Hills?
Not.
Okay, that's...
Across the other side of the interstate.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anything else you wanted to say, ma'am?
I just want to ask one question, if you don't mind. Are you zoned, are you in the city limits?
We're annexed into the county...
You're in Kannapolis city limits. So is it Kannapolis city limits that does your zoning, is what I was wondering?
Should have been. When we were told they were going to put, if they ever rezoned us, they would put a sign out front and give us time enough to protest it and everything.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because you mentioned about the zoning, that the front piece of property could not, was rezoned, or was currently zoned commercial. I was wanting to verify, is that county zoning, or is that some other jurisdiction that did the zoning? And you're saying Kannapolis is the one that has the zoning jurisdiction?
Kannapolis, if they wanted to have, they would have done it to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next I have is Mrs. Barbara Burridge.
Hello? Can you hear me? I can hardly speak, but hopefully I will come through loud and clear. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, I would like to address the Thread Trail also. I have not been a part of some of the other information that has gone through the circuit. But anyway, I would like to know what is the cost, the analysis, and the benefits? What is the concept and the history regarding this project? It's more in-depth, I think, than any of us realize. We haven't even begun to scratch the surface of what it means, and it will mean to our future, and all of our future. I am not anti-recreational, I am not anti-parks, I am not anti-growth. I am just anti-government, taking everything from us and giving us nothing. This is a $17 million stimulus debt. I repeat debt, not a freebie, like all are promoting it to be. You know, each has a way of speaking their own terms, so I repeat terminology. In reality, it is another shovel-ready job. I would certainly appreciate and expect great consideration on behalf of the taxpayers and voters respectfully. Will you give us a solid, definite answer to these questions? And I'd like to interject right here before I forget it. I would like to thank the military, both living and dead, for this right to stand before you today, the right for everybody to vote or not vote, the right to think, not think, the right to speak or not speak, the right to be heard. Now, we have families suffering, losses, devastations, so I can do this, and you can do your job. For that, I'm grateful, and I salute the families of all that serve. What does it do for unemployment? We are at 12% last quote I read. What type of product does it offer to produce an income for a tax base? Our economy is so fragile here, and throughout the nation, we are not immune from a total collapse. In retrospect, previous boards that are, I'm talking about commission boards, that approved every subdivision with lot sizes .24 or even less, leaving us without any yards, common areas, and there are no safe, uncongested roads for children to play in their yard without being either in the road or in a neighbor's yard. Cars are lined up on both sides, there are no adequate parking spaces in their own houses. You go through any subdivision, mark my word, unless there are foreclosure signs out front, you cannot get through it. A child can't play in their yard. This is why we have to seek out a park, and to get our children outside. Otherwise, they have become gamers, TV, all this junk that goes on, and they stay glued to these little MP3s, whatever they got, I know what the terminology is. But anyway, the point being, this has created the overwhelming expense to provide parks, ball fields, et cetera. Along with this overbuilding en masse, created a tremendous burden on the schools. This is another overwhelming debt the taxpayers must absorb. This proposed Thread Trail will not ease the loss of jobs, loss of housing. I do not believe the stress on families will be eradicated by Thread Trail. Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to close with this one statement, this is not meant to be comical, it's meant to be sensible. How many homeless, hungry, destitute people are going to benefit from this trail? I see none. And then I will quote from Forrest Gump, again, this is not comical. Stupid is as stupid does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burridge. Next we have is Mrs. Dana Coulter. I don't know if you're still in. Okay. That's all the public comments that we have. Next we have is the Consent Agenda, which is before us. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Slow move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next we have is new business, is G1, is the Cabarrus County Schools' request for use of qualified school construction bond contractor sales tax, and I would call him Mrs. Kelly Klutz.
I'm here on behalf of Cabarrus County Boards of Education, requesting that you apply the sales tax refund to the project instead of to the debt payment as the normal business. The reason we're asking that you do that is that the sale of the bonds were delayed, and that has caused an anticipated failure to fund all of those projects. We're anticipating potentially $1.3 million of those projects that we may not be able to get to. Both boards agree that these projects on the list were needed, severely needed, and we may not be able to get to those projects. If we do not get to these projects, then potentially, if we have to finance these projects at a later time, we would have to finance them at a much greater cost. And currently, these bonds are at, according to Ms. Dubois, less than 1%. So we would need to, if we delay these projects, we would sell those bonds, or the interest would be at a much greater percent than 3/4 of a percent. So we feel like it would be much more feasible to go ahead and apply the refund to the projects.
Any questions for Mrs. Klutz?
Is the sales tax going to make up a $1 million shortfall?
I'm sure it will not. We don't know how much it would be. The only thing that I can tell you right now is that the Patriots project was approximately $16 million, and we had $126,000 of refund for that project. So this project, the QSCB's $11 million, so it's hard to gauge. We don't know how much labor, how much materials we'll have, so it's a guess right now. So no, it absolutely would not be.
Are these contracts that came in over budget?
They are, some of them are. Some of them are netting each other, and some of them are not bid right now, so we don't know. It would, we won't know until they're all bid.
I mean, I think, as bad as the economy is right now, with no job coming over the cost, I don't know.
Some of them are, and some of them are coming in at the, some of them are low, some of them are high. And you don't have to give us an answer right now, they can hold, we talked to Ms. Dubois, you can hold the sales tax in an account, and at the end of the project, you can make that decision and determine if you want to apply to that project that we have left.
Well, personally, I want to pay off the debt.
Any other questions for Mrs. Klutz?
I guess, the question I got, Mr. Chairman, is that, so what we're looking at, this is, this is for a second, people may not understand quite what we're talking about, the, when goods and materials are purchased for the project, they go to the Home Depot or Lowe's, and whoever the contractor is buys, or wherever they go to buy their supplies, I'm sure it's probably somewhere else other than that. about. The, when goods and materials are purchased for the project, they go to the Home Depot or Lowe's, and whoever the contractor is buys, or wherever they go to buy their, their supplies, I'm sure it's probably somewhere else other than that, they pay sales tax. And so they can turn in those sales tax receipts back to you, or to Pam, and then you take those then and can file with the state, and that sales tax will be refunded to us. So that's, that comes back to the county. And then right now, what do we do with that?
You apply it to the, you hold it in account, apply it to the debt payment right now.
Okay, so we apply it to the debt payment on three-quarters of percent, three-quarters of percent loan. But if we don't do that, that same money, we may have to borrow, what you're saying, we have to borrow that later on, and that could be at three or four percent interest.
Right now, we, we would not be able to get all of these projects completed, and at some point, the, both boards have agreed that these projects are necessary.
Mm-hmm.
So these projects would go left undone.
Okay.
So what we're saying to you is, these projects need to be done at some point. So we're going to come back to you at some point and say, "We need the money to do these projects. How would you, how will you fund them?" So will you, will you go to the bank and do another debt issue, or do you have fund balance? Or, so is it three-quarters of a cent, three-quarters of percent interest that you want to fund, or do you have fund balance, or do you want to pay a higher percent interest? That, that's my plea to you. Is it more feasible to pay the three-quarters of percent interest, or is it better to pay a higher percent interest?
Well, my question is, if we knew what the amount of money needed was, why didn't we borrow enough to start with?
The bond issue was delayed. We weren't in control of the bond issue.
Who made the rule that the sales tax would go to debt service?
That's just what the county's done.
That's what we.
That's what we, as the commissioners, have determined.
Well, you're talking about two different things, Commissioner Burridge, is when you're talking about the sales tax, what Mrs. Klutz is talking about is the refund on the sales tax, and it's a policy of this board that the refund on the sales tax goes towards the payment of the debt, number one. Now, when you're mentioning the sales tax, it, it's easy to confuse the sales tax with what was just recently passed, and this board made a decision that that quarter cent sales tax, which has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight.
We're talking about, we're talking about the sales tax that contractors pay on
Correct.
Their, whatever they buy.
Correct. That's what we're talking about. So that, that is, that has been a board policy, this board's policy, for a number of years, that we hold that money till the end of the project, or to the end of the project is when we ask for the refund, and then that money is used to pay the debt. So that's been a policy of this board for a number of years. Mrs. Dubois may be able to be more specific.
When we borrow debt, there's only two uses of those funds. The first use is for the actual projects that are defined in the bond documents. Any monies that are in excess of constructing those projects, or interest earnings, or sales tax refunds, can be used to further any project related to those specific facilities, or sent to the general fund and paid against debt service. And over the last several years, as Mr. White stated, we have taken that money and put it back in the general fund, and made that year's principal and/or interest payment with those funds that were left over when the project was completed. So those are the only two uses for that money. You can't use it for anything else.
And seeing as how we're on this project list, recall directly, we're basically capital, capital maintenance projects, such as roofs, heating and air conditioning, things like that, that if we delay, we're going to have to, it's not like we're going out and buying a brand-new Corvette with this, we're actually getting the car fixed with this extra money, rather than using three-quarters percent interest money versus three, two or three percent down the road, or taking money out of refund balance and losing the interest that we gain off that money in our investments of two or three percent.
Three percent at this point on investment.
Okay. I can be hopeful.
It's more like point oh-one, point oh-two.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Is there another question for Mrs. Klutz?
Were we, this is for Ms. Dubois, because I, I think this is the case. Were we limited on the amount of QSCB funds that could be accessed for this? Do we not have, do we have a limiting factor, or did we, are we using the original projections that school system staff made prior to being able to hire an architect, and prior to be able to actually put the projects out for bid?
If I remember correctly, we used our allocation that was provided to us by the state.
So we had a limiting.
I don't believe they gave us any, any excess contributions.
We had a limited amount of funds, which is what we identified for these projects, and then the school board determined what projects those funds should go towards. But we couldn't have borrowed an extra one point three million in order to make sure that the identified projects. We could borrow it some other way, but it wouldn't be these type funds.
Correct. We were limited to a certain amount of money that the state defined.
Or we could use fund balance or something in order to, to complete the funds. Typically, what happens with public buildings, you have to have an architect to do those projects, and staff does have access to information to try to determine a value of what they think projects are going to cost. But it's not, I mean, they come up with what they think it's going to cost, but they don't have hard numbers. You can't go out to bid or anything, or even hire an architect to come up with the drawings until you have the funds, because they don't have money to go out and hire the architect. So there's always a delay, and, and they do the best job they can on coming up with what they think projects are going to cost. But until they actually get, until we actually sold the fund, or sold the bonds in order to have the funds available, they couldn't really start the process of valuing. And I'm thinking you were a year out, at least, from when the values, when you came up with values, as to now starting to put the projects out for bid. So it's a little different on, I think, the timing, the timeline, it took so long to get the projects to this point, has a factor to do with the projects. Also, the building materials have gone up, whether labor prices have gone up or not, you know, of course, it's different. But a lot of building materials, depending on what hurricane comes through, building materials can go up and down, or what's going on in the oil market, because so many products are petroleum-based, can impact greatly what these product, project, excuse me, what the materials cost. I would be, I will be surprised if the amount is much different from around fifty thousand dollars. I mean, I, I don't think that we're talking about a huge amount of money here. Fifty thousand dollars for me is a lot of money for these projects. What I would think would happen is that we, they would get down to where they have the next project on the list, and they need ten thousand dollars to finish the project. So the question is, do you want to finish that project, or do you want to say, "No, we're not going to do that project, we're not going to do anything." So I guess my suggestion would be that we continue to hold these funds separate, which is what you're going to do anyway. And as we get to where the school board has identified the projects and been able to bid out the projects, and they can come back to us with some concrete numbers on, one, the amount of tax refund that's available, and what amount it would take to finish that next project, then we make a determination if that's something that we want to do, and not shut the door either way at this point in time. Because that's what you're going to do anyway, is separate it and account for the funds. As you file for the sales tax refund, you're going to account for it in a separate area anyway.
Correct, that's what we do.
If the fifty thou, if it's, just to use the number fifty thousand, if that doesn't complete the next project, that answers the question. It's a moot point, unless this board will decide to provide additional funding, which at this point in time, I don't have the feeling that there's additional funds available. So it may be a moot point, once we've really can put a real number on all of this.
That's what I was trying, I think, elaborate one while ago, is that, because this money that's coming back, the tax refund money, is three-quarters of percent interest money versus any other source of money we go to, is going to be more than that, it's going to cost us more than that. So, Commissioner.
This was a different debt issue. It was under a COPS, a certificate of participation, but this was the first time we were allowed to issue the debt and turn in the projects with estimates. We've always had to have an architect and had to have a bid tabulation form for the actual construction projects, because that's how the money was borrowed. But the way this money was designated, they allowed estimates to come through. Not from, you know, not the way we normally do the process, and that's why when we typically do another bond deal for construction of new schools, we're not this far off. But in this process, they were allowed to provide estimates for their projects. And the delay in the sale of the QSCBs or into the certificates of participation was because there was a, a certain rate, interest rate, that we needed to hit in order to have zero interest on the debt, and we continued to wait until that number showed up. For the, for the citizens, we did not want to have a tax rate, and for fifty percent of the debt, there is no tax rate, excuse me, no interest on the bonds. The other one is the point oh-seven, so it was, was worth the wait, but it did cost them a little bit of delay in their projects.
Commissioner Major, you got some questions?
I have a question, and Pam, you might be able to answer this a little bit better. Is the refund, the refund of the sales tax, is it just Cabarrus County's portion of the sales tax, or is it all the total sales tax of seven percent?
It's the full seven, yeah.
The full, okay. So the state portion comes back as well?
Yeah, we, we are not sales tax exempt, but yet we're allowed to claim sales tax refunds on the backside.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got some, you said it, mentioned it earlier, I want to make certain, what I heard you said was correct, is that the net interest cost of this money borrowed is point zero-seven percent.
Correct.
So it's less than one percent. And also, that a portion of it is going to be a zero, a net zero-interest rate?
Pretty close to a fifty-fifty split.
Okay. And it was mentioned earlier tonight that we are borrowing five hundred million dollars for QSCBs, or Qualified School Construction Bonds. I thought that the rate, I thought that we were borrowing roughly fourteen point six million dollars.
Fourteen million, six thirty-five even.
Okay. And also, let's see here.
That's for both school districts.
For both school districts?
Correct.
Okay. And it's for various projects throughout. Now, in regards to the projects that are on the list that are being completed, the school board and the Board of Commissioners in somewhat have ranked the hierarchy of those projects. Is that correct, Mrs. Klutz? And wherever the money falls, the fourteen million, six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars falls, there may be project fifteen, eighteen, or fifteen, sixteen, seventeen just doesn't get to it. And that's what you're asking to possibly cover. Right now, we don't know where that drop line is, because where the, where the line is, because the monies haven't, all the bids haven't come in or been completed, or the construction hasn't been completed. Okay. So getting back to what Commissioner Poole says, is until we know, one, how much money it is, and what, two, whether it will cover any additional project, it's premature to make a decision tonight.
Right.
But we can hold it and wait until the end to see, is that something we want to do or not?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions based on what I said? Commissioner Burridge?
My question is, if you were borrowing money at zero percent interest, why don't you just go ahead and borrow a couple extra million and be sure you has covered?
We weren't allowed to borrow anymore.
We were limited by the state of what our allocation was. We could not exceed it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we would have loved to have done that, but we were limited.
Well, I just can't see changing the rules in the middle of the game.
Okay.
I'm not certain what kind of a motion at this point in time. We can table it until such time as the Board of Education can bring back specific information.
Okay.
Or I can make a motion that we separate the funds, same thing, until the Board of Education comes back with specific information. It doesn't really, Ritz rules of order, it doesn't matter to me whether it's a motion to table, or if it's.
I think it's cleaner if we just did a motion to table to determine what the amount is, and then decide if that's the project.
Then I would make a motion to table this item until such time as the Cabarrus County Board of Education can come back with specific information. And I would also say that if we do, whatever we do for Cabarrus County School Board, we should do for the Kannapolis City School Board. So I would request that Kannapolis City Schools also bring back the same information, so that both school systems are treated fairly.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to table this, table this matter until near the end of the project, to make a determination of, one, what is the sales tax refund amount, and, two, what are the remaining projects that are on the list, if any. We have that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, if I could.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, and I don't know whether this has to be included or not, because I think it's just probably just as we get down to that point, I would like to see us presented with, you know, that equivalent amount, what it would cost us as far as paying that.
Rate.
Paying that rate compared to borrowing the like, same amount of money, and or pulling it out of fund balance, and what we, what that cost of that money would be. Well, we can see that side by side.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, five-oh. Next matter we have is the G2, is Board of Elections to select Griffin Architect. I'll turn it over to Mr. Billifer.
Good evening. In March 2011, we put an RFQ out for a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services for demolition of the old Board of Elections on Corbin. We received four packages. After the internal committee met, the internal committee of the county has decided that Griffin Architecture was the chosen architect for that project, asking for the board to motion to allow county manager and county attorney to negotiate a contract to move forward with that demolition process.
Is there any questions for Mr. Billifer? Is, is that building safe just to, just to be put on the open market and sold?
You have significant structural issues, and do you?
Would be no. With a significant.
The answer would be no. I don't think that we would want to take the liability in that. That is correct.
If we sold a building that was structurally inadequate, a buyer could come back on us and make us do repairs or improvements to it, if it's, would be deemed a problem?
You would have to kind of deal, I, I think probably our risk manager could better answer that. But I would say, yes, there is significant structural issues with the lower half of that building. And I would also tell you that mechanically speaking, we've been holding off on doing things because we knew we were moving them out. So just from that standpoint of a lease, there would be things that we would need to do. Another concern is if you do too much renovations to a property like that, that happens to be two stories, you could be implied in some ADA issues, which would mean an elevator.
Any other questions?
Is there any, I mean, we, I don't think we've talked about the long-term plans, it's not really related to the issue, issue for that corner, is it?
No, sir. What, what we're. We are, once we have the architect on board, we'll start programming it and, and come back with a couple of different solutions and, and pass those through to the board to pick one. Whether it's going to be a, an elevated, or just a green space, or a future small parking lot there at street level, we'll bring those back for you guys to make the decision at a later date.
Commissioner Burridge?
Looks to me like if you sold it as is, you wouldn't have no problem with somebody coming back on you.
We have a building in southern part of the county that we've tried to sell as is.
You talking about Bethel School?
Yes, sir.
Well, why don't we give that away instead of spending five hundred thousand dollars to tear it down?
We, do we have, what is the pleasure of this board in regards to this request?
Make a motion to select Griffin Architecture, a local architecture firm, to handle this issue, and authorize county manager and county attorney to negotiate, negotiate a contract on behalf of the board.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Is that to actually put the contract together and tear the building down, or is that just to bring the plans back?
It's a motion to select Griffin Architect to demolish it and off, to demolish the building.
Okay.
Okay. We have that motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, four-oh-one. Next that we have is G3, is the emergency management contract for methamphetamine lab cleanup. I'll turn it over to our emergency management director, Mr. Bobby Smith, and also call on Sheriff Riley, if you have anything to say at the same time.
Good evening. We're here before you tonight to request a budget amendment in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the county manager to execute a contract with CCI Incorporated to provide cleanup services for methamphetamine labs. As we discussed at the work session, the federal and state funding that was available for that program is no longer available. So we are looking to ask to have this contract signed, because it is now the responsibility of the local jurisdictions to take care of this now. One thing I do want to clear up, I don't think I made real clear at the work session, is that what we're looking at doing is mitigating the immediate hazards, the open chemicals, the leaking chemicals, things of that nature. If the structure has areas that need remediation, but is not an imminent hazard, then we will secure that and go through the posting process, and then the SBI and the Health Department will work. And then the SBI and the Health Department will work with the property owners to remediate that property. So we're looking to just contain and control immediate issues with the chemicals and also to properly dispose the equipment we use in the response to those labs. We do have a grant program available that we can get reimbursed. It does take 18 months usually to get to that process. And as we discussed, and I've had conversations with the sheriff, we can also look at going after the assets of the offender if there are any. So we'd have to kind of look at it case by case to see which avenue we would want to pursue to get the reimbursement, which would work best for the county.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Go ahead, Commissioner Meadsmore.
So, so just that we're all clear, the state was paying for this process and now they're asking the county?
Yes, the federal government was actually paying, and those funds were halted, and the state picked up at that point till their funds ran out, and now it's our turn.
Okay.
When you file for, towards the grant to reimburse, to refill the pot, if you will, if funds are expended, what, who's providing the grant funds?
That is through the EPA. So it's actually another federal program, but it's actually, M1 we've used on other chemical spills before, so we, we are familiar with the process. But we did confirm that we could use this grant program for meth labs.
I asked at the work session, can, will CCI in the contract agree that they would be able to mobilize within an hour so that, because the clock starts ticking as soon as we call them? Do we have some assurances that within an hour they would be mobilized so that we're not paying them for two or three hours of work and they're not on the site yet?
I had a conversation with CCI. They were reluctant to commit to a timeframe due to the fact they may be out on another call, but what they have agreed to is they will not charge us till they are en route to our incidents. So in other words, if they're on another call, we call them once they clear that scene and route. Or if we call them in the middle of the night, their crews will mobilize at their office and they will not start the clock till they have all their equipment on our en route to our site.
I find that to be acceptable. And as I discussed at the meeting, I wouldn't want to be charged for a couple, and I'm not saying they would do this, but you would not want to be charged for a couple hours while they're mobilizing before they're actually ready to go. And that makes perfect sense that, I don't mind the clock starting, you know, once they get started on the contract. CCI is a county-based company? Are they based in Cabarrus County?
Their actual headquarters is right across the line in Rowan now, but most of their employees are actually in Cabarrus County and work for several of the response agencies in Cabarrus County, so it is a local resource.
So their response time would be minimal as far as that goes?
Yes, ma'am.
Once they were en route, we're not talking about somebody driving from Georgia to get here to do the work, we're talking about somebody that is close enough by that we wouldn't have a long transition time?
Yes, ma'am. They're right on the county line, so it'd be quick response.
And one of the things you talked about is going after assets if they have assets. Not many meth people have assets. There's also, if there is an avenue to collect that through the criminal process, either through restitution, that would be pursued as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the contract with CCI for methamphetamine lab cleanup and authorize the budget amendment to cover the associated costs?
Still moved?
Taken.
We have a motion, we have a second. I will call for a vote in a second, but once again, we do not have a meth problem. I mean, that, there may be some people that are using meth, there may be some people that are using meth, but it is not a problem that we're having to contend with on a daily basis or even on a weekly basis. I think you said it happens rarely throughout the year.
Sheriff, I think did some research and has some figures, if you'd like.
Since 2002, we've had 12 in Cabarrus County, and that's amongst, we've had four in, one in Harrisburg, one in Concord that was unincorporated areas, and then two in the county. We did have one today, ironically, in the county, so 13 since 2002, but...
Okay, so 13 over the past nine years?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have is G4, is the Rotary Park, Union Street and Corbin Avenue. That has been asked to be tabled in order to receive additional information. It has not been able to have been provided to us. Many of the questions that we have, I believe we haven't, they have not been able to get all the answers, so it needs to be tabled until the November meeting, which would be the 21st?
Mr. Chairman, that was on your changes to the agenda for removal?
Okay, so we got it removed. Thank you. Under G5 is, we have the Parks Department Resolution of Support for Carolina Thread Trail DOT Tiger Grant Application. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Strong, and you are not Mr. Lindsey Dunnevent, but...
Travis Morehead.
Travis.
Thank you. And as the agenda indicates, we are asking for a resolution of support for the 2011 DOT Tiger Grant III Greenway Trail Grant. It is for 18.8 miles in Cabarrus County, none of which are in Cabarrus County properties, either Kannapolis, Concord, or Harrisburg city limits. In 2009, the Thread Trail Greenway Master Plan was approved by Cabarrus County and all the municipalities as an official element of the Comprehensive Master Plan, better known as our Livable Community Blueprint. At that time, it was discussed that Cabarrus County had no intent of using eminent domain to acquire land for the Greenway. In the plan, there are 100 miles of trail identified. Six miles exist, and 77 miles were already identified in the previously adopted Livable Community Blueprint. The Department of Transportation has $526 million that it's going to award in Tiger III grants in 2011. Carolina Thread Trail is in the process of applying for one of the grants for Mecklenburg and Cabarrus County. The map that is on the screen right now shows Cabarrus County, that's the western side of Cabarrus County, then going down is the rest of the trail that goes down to NASCAR Speedway. That's the 18.8 miles, mostly along the Rocky River Corridor. All of the miles included, as I said, are in Kannapolis, Concord, and Harrisburg city limits, therefore requiring no funds for Cabarrus County, also meaning that there would be no maintenance by Cabarrus County until there are miles built in Cabarrus County, and that has nothing to do with this. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to, turn it over to Travis Morehead to give you more details on the grant itself. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Travis Morehead, 105 West Moore Street in Charlotte. I'm a community coordinator with the Carolina Thread Trail. I'm glad to be here tonight. I understand there were some questions that came up during the public comments. Glad to try to address those, and I'm also glad to try to address any questions you have. As Lana stated succinctly, we are asking for a resolution of support. There are no funds being asked for from Cabarrus County at this time. The Tiger Grant application, it's $527 million. When we did our analysis based off last year's grants, roughly 2% of the applicants who applied received a Tiger Grant, and this is really a transportation project. Our application is a transportation project. The applicant cannot be, has to be a governmental entity. We are helping to coordinate between local jurisdictions in Cabarrus County and also in Mecklenburg County with the City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. To that point, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Travis?
Travis, I just got a question. I mean, one of the things that came up was the, the whole thing of eminent domain, and I know when you, you know, and I first say that if anybody wants to find out about the Carolina Thread Trail, which has been around, we've been talking about for about six years now, it's on, they have a web, you have a website?
Yes, sir.
carolinathreadtrail.org. And I know that there's only a page, whole page on eminent domain. And, and I think this was when it came up to us, when these boards unanimously threw their support behind the Carolina Thread Trail since 2005.
Yes, sir.
And, and, you know, kind of explain, kind of, it's kind of the, almost some of the discussion that went on about arriving at the position on eminent domain.
We, we have an eminent domain position. We are looking to work with willing property owners to have a land transaction where land will trade hands in order to, either via an easement or fee simple, to build trail. We do not support the use of eminent domain to build trails, to acquire land to build trails. In fact, if organizations do that, now we have recently strengthened our policy, we will not, if, we will not privately fund trails that have been condemned. So if Cabarrus County or the City of Concord were to condemn a portion and ask for a grant from our organization, you will not be, be eligible, you won't be eligible to receive those funds. It's also interesting to note, I'm glad you brought up the funding source, so we've recently done some analysis. We've donated through our private foundation, through our private organization, over a million dollars to Cabarrus County's municipalities and grant funds. That went from both Clean Water Management Trust Fund and our private funding sources. We funded projects in Midland recently at the tune of $100,000 even. We funded projects in Concord at $110,000, Kannapolis at $30,000, and land acquisition projects through other applicants. So we're here in the community to try to better, provide trails and greenways for folks, and we're putting our money where our mouth is.
And I believe a lot, in fact, the route coming along Rocky River, a lot of these things, you're sharing easements that already exist, such as sewer right of ways or utility right of ways that are already there.
There, there are utility right of ways in those areas, yes, sir. And we can co-locate those. WASC has been a very willing partner to work with us to co-locate.
Commissioner Burge?
You said no Cabarrus County tax funds would be used for this?
No, sir. I didn't say no Cabarrus. I said we're not asking for Cabarrus County tonight to, to provide any tax funding for this grant application. We're simply looking for your support.
Where's the $17 million coming from?
The $17 million, the project total cost, as we've modified it, the project being submitted is going to be $20 million. Of that, $4 million has been committed, non-federal funds have been committed by Cabarrus County communities. Another roughly $4.5 million has also been committed across the Mecklenburg County line by local communities there. So the total project cost right now is $28 million. Of that, $8 million has been committed by local governments, the state, and other organizations to make up this match. That match totals about 29% of, the requirement for Tiger is you had to have a match greater than 20% to be eligible.
Hello? I'm sorry, but getting back to Commissioner Burge's question, Cabarrus County is not putting any money towards the 17 million, the 20 million, the 24 or the 28 million that you've mentioned tonight?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry to cut you off, Commissioner.
In other words, nobody in Cabarrus County pays federal tax?
No, sir. I'm saying that I'm not asking this Board for any taxes from your, from your local funds.
I'm saying, where's the $17 million coming from? Federal government, right?
Yes, sir. It's the federal government. I thought Ms. Strong approached that. It was, US Department of Transportation is submitting this grant, or making this grant available.
Commissioner Meadsmore?
Yes. Whenever we're discussing the eminent domain, the portion I see on the map, you said you work with willing property owners. Is that, have you already touched base with those property owners, or is that just projected? You know, if it, if there's a, you know, span of property owners that are, you know, refuse to work with this project, I guess it'll curve around, or?
This is a federal grant application, the, the local communities will be in charge of, of doing this. These are, these are funds that, the funds that I'm speaking to, the ones that we can control about not giving funds out for eminent domain, those are private funds that we have control over. The, the communities in this case have not approached property owners along this whole entire 41-mile route. They will be doing that in the stages if the grant is awarded, and we expect the grant to come out, a grant notice to come out in April of 2012.
It's my understanding, Commissioner Meadsmore, that some of the property owners have been approached already, especially on the Kannapolis section. Travis, not all of them by any means, but some of them have been...
That is true.
Same thing in, in Harrisburg, and I believe Concord has worked with the majority of the landowners on their section as well. I'm not saying that they're all saying, yeah, we want to sell right now, but they are talking.
Been approached.
Yes.
Just one comment, but two, I think, and to keep any confusion down, I mean, and for people just, tonight's the first time they've heard of this, or the last couple weeks, and may have read something in the paper that maybe got them thinking this is some kind of a big, larger conspiracy to take away private land ownership. The Carolina Thread Trail is basically nothing more than just a coordinator of various local governments so that we don't spend tax money on building trails to nowhere, so that we connect those trails in some kind of network so that when you get to the Cabarrus County, Mecklenburg County line, there's a trail that Mecklenburg County has run because this is kind of the way it's, it's kind of a planning effort more than anything else. And it's not, they all don't have any kind of governmental authority over any of these trails, or you're a private organization.
That's, all those facts are absolutely correct. We are a nonprofit organization, we do not have any power to use eminent domain, we only try to help local, local governments coordinate both internal to the county and external to the county and make funds available to get trails and greenways started through a private capital campaign in which we're trying to raise funds to do that, to give out in the form of grants.
So there's nothing wrong with, for instance, Concord with the trail, I mean, the Greenway we have down next to Branchview, them designating that part of the Carolina Thread Trail and put it sign up?
That's correct.
And it's already built?
That's correct.
Yeah. So...
It was mentioned tonight that the Thread Trail that we were talking about tonight is in the United Nations Agenda 21 program that is transforming government from servant of the people to be master of the people. Do y'all have any ties to the United Nations or Agenda 21?
No, sir. We do not.
Okay. Is this, well, thank you. Anything else?
The question I have, we sat here last month and voted down $75,000 of funds that actually would have went to help people weatherize their homes because it was stimulus money we didn't want to raise the debt of the federal government. And we sitting here tonight talking about $17 million like it's nothing, and the $75,000 was a whole lot of money. And I have a problem with this, you know, I don't care if people get to Ardell County and have to drive around and get to the trail in Charlotte. I just think it's a, you know, it's a waste of money by the time our grandchildren, great-grandchildren get the debt paid off, the rivers will all be flooded and washed the whole thing away anyway. So it's, you know, seems like a useless thing to be doing.
Any other, do we have, what's the pleasure of this Board?
Well, having, I know it was before cars came along, and having the fact that we, the very first settlers that came into this area came down paths probably not even as improved as this will be, and I don't have a problem with it. I mean, because all we're doing tonight is saying we support the concept, Carolina Thread Trail, and we support the concept of them applying for the grant. And so I, I hear what you're saying, I understand, you know, because it's easy to draw that analogy. And I, I understand, Mr. Burge, purely what you're saying. In fact, clarify that, not to get off on a tangent, but last month, I think one thing that's misconstrued is I, I would support us using local, our local fund balance, local contingency funds to help wipe out that, that, the rehabilitation projects that we have that we didn't, you know, we didn't take the grant for that. But anyway, I fully, I don't think this is a problem because I've, I've fully supported this trail all along. I think the idea of creating a series and networking greenways is great, it's safer because you don't have people then, they can move from one place to the other on foot or bicycle, and don't have to go out on the highways to do it. It's better off where we are. And so I, I mean, and the fact that there's so much private money that's coming into this, it's not just that we're going to be pouring sand down a rat hole. We're, it's accomplishing something and improving the quality of life. So I guess with that, I would make the motion that we approve the, that we approve the letter of support and...
Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution of support.
Now, what the resolution says is that whereas the President of the United States signed the FY 2011 Continuum and Appropriations Act, which authorized 526.944 million to DOT for national infrastructure investments referred to as DOT as Tiger discretionary grants, and whereas this year's Tiger discretionary grants are for capital investments in surface transportation and are not to be awarded on a competitive basis for projects that will have significant impact on the nation, that will have a significant impact on the nation, a metropolitan area or region, and whereas the project outlined herein will significantly impact desirable long-term outcomes for the region in regard to economic competitiveness, livability, environmental sustainability and safety, and will quickly create and preserve jobs, and will promote rapid increase, increases in economic activity, and whereas the project demonstrates strong collaboration among a broad range of participants and integrates transportation with other public service efforts by enhancing connectivity via an active transportation network to residential areas, businesses, schools, colleges, universities, major employers, health care facilities, and regional and national visitor attractions, and whereas the alternative transportation opportunities also provide key amenities to neighborhoods, provide safe areas for underserved citizens, old and young, to use for travel, improve the quality of air by promoting non-motorized transportation, improve the quality of water through natural buffers, promote healthy lifestyles by offering a place for exercise and recreation, and develop a sense of community through stronger social and family ties. Now, now therefore be it resolved that Cabarrus County supports the application for a Tiger III or Tiger III discretionary grant to construct a transportation facility that will connect participating jurisdictions that include Cabarrus County, Mecklenburg County, and other cities, and the cities of Charlotte, Concord, Harrisburg, and Kannapolis along these routes associated with the Carolina Thread Trail plans. That is the motion. Do we have a second to that motion? I'll make a second. All in, do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three, two. Next we have is G six, is the Tax Administration on Adoption of the 2012 Schedule of Values. I'll turn it over to Mr. Brent Weisner for presentation.
I presented the Schedule of Values to you back in August, and since that time, it's been available for the public to review it. We have had several people call and have questions about that. We've met with some of these folks, or spoken with them over the phone, and we've dealt with, we think we've effectively dealt with the issues that they have raised. During that process, we made a few changes to the schedule. First and foremost, we reduced the base rate of single-family residential homes from seventy dollars a square foot to sixty-eight dollars a square foot. In Chapter Eight of the manual, we clarified information on the capitalization rates that we were using. In Chapter Nine, we added a section on golf course appraisal, and how you grade a golf course. And in Chapter Twelve, we've added some additional photographs. We think at this point that we have a Schedule of Values that can effectively arrive at market value if applied properly. And so we're here tonight to ask for your approval of the market value Schedule of Values and the present use Value Schedule of Values. Be glad to answer questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Weisner?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. If I could, Mr. Weisner, I just, I want to just clarify that for the public and understand, you know, we've talked about it a lot, and we've been in here several months now, and as we've discussed this, and there's been some of the stuff written in the papers, things that people have said, things that have been put out, and I think, we're coming tonight thinking we're about to raise taxes tonight. The, when, what this does is codifies, it makes it, puts the rules in place for how you're doing the revow. When do you come back to us with the final report on the revow?
That is correct, and we come back to you in January with the final report, showing you the results of the revaluation, and if you approve of the results, then we'll send the notices out in February.
So we could in January very well set up here and say, we don't like what happened, and turn you around and send you back out the door to redo it, or?
Well, we can't redo the Schedule of Values at that point.
Right.
But we can make adjustments to the final values. No matter what the Schedule of Values says, we still have to arrive at market value on each property.
And that's required by state law, we arrive at what market value is.
That is correct.
Okay. So there's a decision we have to make, though, when, before this goes into effect. And then in February, after people receive their notices, then, a part of that also is you, I don't know whether you do it, or whether Mr. Dubois does it, but we have to, we're required to have you present us with, and the public has to be notified of what the revenue-neutral tax rate is at that time.
That is correct.
So that's the second decision we have to make, is whether or not we're going to adjust the tax rate to the revenue-neutral tax rate, or we're going to leave it at sixty-three cents. So that decision comes then, and that's part of the overall bigger budget picture, because we can only by law set the tax rate in July. We cannot set it any other time of the year.
That's correct.
So we cannot change the tax rate tonight by our actions, and we'll not be changing it.
That is right.
Okay.
And if we don't adopt the Schedule of Values, then the value that is on property, we would, the option we have is either to adopt a Schedule of Value, or if we don't make a change, then I guess we would be postponing the revow, which means properties would continue to be valued at their current rate, which was done prior to the recession that we have been.
Two thousand and eight.
Revenue to, two thousand and eight was when it was done.
That is correct. We have to adopt the Schedule of Values to proceed with the revaluation.
Effectively.
When we, by law, we don't have to do a revow except for every eight years.
That's correct.
So we can not adopt the values tonight, and just not do a revaluation next year and wait for five, six, seven, eight, well, we have to do it in eight years, so that would be two thousand and sixteen.
Four more years, four more years, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I mean, given the fact that this is what we need to do it with, I'm not, I mean, somewhere else, there's somebody got the idea that we're somehow another, by adopting the Statement of Values, we're raising taxes tonight, we're not. So I would move that we proceed, because property values are down. If we wait, I mean, there's been some counties out here that have decided to skip it and go to eight years, in hopes that then they will get through the valley and the property values will come back up. And I don't think that's, that's pretty disingenuous with the public, I think, to make them ride out that storm. But I think part of that discussion is that we have to be ready now and prepared ourselves to make the hard cuts that we have to make, because of what I remember seeing last year, we're talking about twelve to thirteen million dollars deficit that we may have to make up if we keep the tax rate at sixty-three cents. So, and we just, you know, basic total, you know, on what property values have dropped, and we don't go revenue-neutral, we're going to lose that much money in revenue. So I, there's just, that's something we're going to have to have a community discussion about, but I think Mr. Weisner, at that point in time, will be, his work will be done for.
My work is never done.
Yeah, your work, yeah, your work is never done, you're right. So with that, I make a motion that we do approve the Statement of Values, as it presented.
Well, it's the Market Value Schedule of Values. You said the Statement of Values.
Yes. Need two motions, one for market value, one for present use value.
There is no Statement of Values.
The Market Value Schedule of Values, that we make a motion, we approve that.
And you also make a motion?
And the Present Use Schedule of Values.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the Market Value Schedule of Values and the Present Use Schedule of Values. After we've had two hearings, or has been two public hearings, one, we have that, those two motions, do we have a second?
Second.
We have two, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meesmer?
It's, you know, with the Schedule of Values that, you know, we're voting on tonight, we know that the values are potentially going down. That's the reports I've been hearing over the past few months. I think what's critical is that whenever we run into next year and we're working through the tax rate, and we're working through the budget, I think that's when it's going to be critical that we hear from the public and really get the input then about what's going to happen with the budget then and the tax rate. I think that's the critical issue, is how the County Commission Board would potentially adjust the tax rate. And, you know, I'm certainly going to be opposed to raising the tax rate at all, and I've said that repeatedly, and I said that certainly in the last retreat in the budget hearing. So, you know, I think looking forward to that, that's where I think the critical conversations are going to take place, and the critical decisions will happen.
Commissioner Burge?
Well, I think when it comes back up, you're going to have to make some changes and lower it. I don't think this is low enough to start with, but, you know, vote on it and see where it goes.
The, I think one thing we got to understand in what Commissioner Meesmer just made, is that we've had commissioners on this board over the last several years that have enjoyed proclaiming, you know, about lowering taxes, or cutting taxes, or not raising taxes, but when it came time to identify, you know, it's not just a matter of buying one less box of ballpoint pens per department. If you're looking at thirteen million dollars, you're looking at a lot of money, and you're looking at strategically changing the role of the county government in Cabarrus County. And I think that's what, if any of us that support keeping the tax rate at sixty-three cents, understand that we, part of that also is provide the leadership to be able to identify what things that you would eliminate, and what programs will be eliminated and cut, and going after the things that normally are not touched. I would, that's the challenge we have to find us over the next several months.
The way I look at it is this, is that the Market Value Schedule of Values and the Present Use Schedule of Values does not increase property taxes, that we set that property tax rate July the first of this year we're in right now, and that goes until June thirtieth of next year. The Commissioner Meesmer is exactly right, is that our role is that if we are not going to adopt a revenue-neutral tax rate, then we need to look at making cuts. So that's what we, that is where the tax rate is set for the following year. This board is not required to do a revaluation this year. We could wait for another four years per, by the statute, by law. But we think, I believe, I certainly think, that it's only fair to do a revaluation now to better reflect the changes in the market. Jason's talked about it earlier tonight. This, these Schedule of Values that we have will equalize the values of the property, so each owner pays, property owner pays the taxes based on the property's true value, not what is, was projected, or what was determined at one point in time. Revaluation, I look at it as an arm-length transaction of sales using the Schedule of Values as standards and rules to determine that price. So I think that to vote against this tonight would mean that you're voting that you don't want to do a revaluation to correct any errors that is out there in the public right now. So we have a motion, now, I want to be abundantly clear that we need to be aware of, we have a motion to approve the Market Value Schedule of Values and a motion to approve the Present Use Schedule of Values, so that there's a clear delineation in the vote as it relates to the Market Schedule of Values. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of the Market Value Schedule of Values approving that, say aye.
Aye.
All, anybody who would like to say opposed, please vote.
Aye.
Okay. The Market Value Schedule of Values passes four, one. The next motion that we have is to approve the Present Use Schedule of Values, and as it relates to that, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, four, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may.
I'm not opposed to the revaluation. I'm opposed to the, I don't think the sixty-eight dollar square foot that's in here is correct. It's not low enough. From every builder I've talked to, it's not, and that's my reason for voting against it. I have nothing, I think we should revalue the county, because it's going to be a lot lower than what it was in two thousand and eight.
Thank you, sir. I believe that covers all of our new business, is that correct? Mrs. Honeycutt?
We do have, we're going to get to the EDC report in just a second. In regards to appointments under H one, we have, we have, we have appointments for the Council for Sustainable Local Economy, it has been a, from the CSLE, there is a recommendation to appoint, excuse me, there is a request to remove Andrew Proaks, Sean Fleming, Jane McCray, Mark Brun, Grace Minnet, Steve Blinsky from the CSLE roster. Do we have a motion to remove those persons?
No.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Do we, do we have a request from that council to appoint Joshua Knite to the CSLE to complete an unexpired term ending March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and to appoint Ronnie Long and A.L. Fleming to the CSLE to complete unexpired terms ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, including an exception to the Service on Multiple Boards provision of the Appointment Policy for Mr. Fleming?
No.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye. Passes four, one. Next we have is H two, the appointments to the Nursing Home Community, is, an application was received by Mrs. Linda Barnhart for consideration. Do we have a motion to appoint Linda Barnhart to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, subject to approval by the Regional Ombudsman?
No.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. As it relates to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, is there a motion to approve, remove Mrs. Elizabeth Ryan, she has made a resignation from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster?
No.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next we have is a report, and it's I one, and it's a quarterly report from the Economic Development Corporation, and I would turn this over to the trifecta. Starting off with Mr. McDaniels.
It's my pleasure, excuse me, it's my pleasure this afternoon, or tonight, to give you our quarterly update.
It's been a long meeting.
I do believe you have this on your laptops, I'll let you sort of scroll through, but the first couple of pages are the, it's the economic overview from the Department of Commerce, so we always want to include that, so you can put together a state-level view as we go into the more county details. So that's what you're seeing on the first couple of pages. You can see, unfortunately, the unemployment rate for the state did increase by point two percent, and the Consumer Confidence Index decreased. So those numbers are not going in the direction we would prefer at the state level, but hopefully we'll be able to counteract some of those figures. On the next couple of pages are the staff activities, and we break that down by EDE partners, prospects, projects, and we try to give you an idea of who we're working with as best as we can. Obviously, in a public forum, it's tough to reveal all the folks that you are meeting with, but we try to give you as much specifics as possible.
Can you stop right there real quick? Do you mind if I interject?
You're right.
Okay. Some of the businesses that we, that are here in the county, we don't see a lot of traffic going in and out. And there is a business over near the airports, you don't see a lot of traffic going in and out. They're quite busy because of the confidentiality of their business and what they're trying to project. So that when you don't see a lot of traffic, doesn't mean they're not busy inside.
That's right. Very much so.
I mean, that's one particular company that is very confidential about who their clients are.
Yeah, then there's definitely, there's other folks, large operations in the county that, when you get into their facility, are amazed by what's actually in there, because they, they really don't want the general public to know there may be valuable items or something occurring in the facility that is, you know, could be a theft threat for something of that nature, so.
How are the conferences that y'all have attended, have they, have they produced some leads, or?
Absolutely, yeah, and I'll get to that now. As we get through the staff activities, we'll actually get into the project report, that's on, actually fifteen leads to our missions, conventions, reports. One of the things, we did tweak this, I wanted to show you what we're doing on follow-up. For example, if we go to a conference and we meet various folks, obviously if there's a lead or a possibility for interest in the community, we're going to follow up. If it's more of a long-term sales approach, we met somebody who's, we want to stay in touch with, but obviously don't need to call or email every day, we do have industry-specific distribution lists. So that's what you're going to see on follow-up plan, if that means add to distribution list. For example, anything in the energy sector, if we have an announcement, or a local company that spans, we'll send that out in email form to that specific sector, as well as consultants who may work in that space. For example, motorsports, we do the exact same thing with that, and automotive and aerospace. So if you look at our target sectors, we are identifying potential leads from those industries. Also, the mission trip to Michigan and Ohio, that was an opportunity to travel directly to call on a company that's in the process of possibly buying a local firm and moving some production down from Michigan. So we weren't too far away, so we went over and physically sat in their facilities, learning more about the building, learn a little more about the company, and that's a good way for us to validate who they are, find out if they are going to be good corporate citizens. And very successful trip, they've actually followed up and been to Cabarrus County twice now, so we anticipate good news. Also, the conference that's not on here is the IEDC Conference, that was something that we hosted here in Cabarrus County. Both John and I were on the bus tours as tour guides, and that was quite a day, because we had two buses in the morning, then an afternoon bus. I believe that was the day of your commission meeting as well, so it was quite a long day for us. But one of the things, as, as part of that conference, we were able to get an attendee list, and we were able to pull out the consultants that were on our tours and follow up with them. So it wasn't just ED representatives from around the world, it was also consultants who got a chance to see Cabarrus County. In fact, of the tours, four, three or four of the tours were actually in Cabarrus County. So we had motorsports-focused tour, NRC-focused tour, and then a local farms tour as well. So we, of the Charlotte regional program, a large portion of that was based here in Cabarrus County, so we were very proud to host those folks.
In regards to that, I got a lot of emails from several people, very excited about the research campus and what's going on there. But also, what's interesting is the research camp was on one side, and then the incubator farm was, we got a lot of, I got a lot of comments, a lot of emails from there saying that, how progressive both projects are in one county.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It was seeing is believing was the, one of the things we heard from a lot of folks. And there was a lot of jealousy. We have a lot of assets here in this community that sometimes we don't take for granted and we need to. You can, on the next page is our actual project report. You can see, hopefully, a snapshot of who is, of who we're looking at, the industry, the size. Now, one of the things that's interesting that we're seeing is about 70% of prospects are looking for new buildings. So we've, we haven't had a lot of development in the last couple of years in the real estate market. So that's creating, oh, excuse me, a harder time for us because we don't have product. For us, sites are building, are our products. So it's sort of like going to a store and there's nothing on the shelves. So we're always working to try to partner with developers, feed them information, provide anything that could ease the ability to start spec construction. And then on the other, last page.
Well, before you get to the last page, on the project activity on the upper right-hand corner, is there any rhyme or reason for the dips in February, May, and August? Is there?
It's, we've looked at the trend lines over year, over a few years. There is normally a dip in July and August due to vacations.
Right.
CEOs and decision-makers are often on vacation. The dips in the other months, traditionally, August, September, and October are very busy. And then after the, sort of the period between Thanksgiving and Christmas, it really slows down. And then picks back up really rapidly in January. But the ups and downs in February and March are pretty, pretty consistent for us. Now, and the other thing I wanted to point out, in the many, you'll see 64% of our active projects are in manufacturing. Of that, our three strongest sectors right now really correspond with our target industries, which are automotive and motorsports, food and nutrition, as well as aerospace. So of that 64%, we're seeing a good, a good number of activity in our core focuses. We don't try to be everything to everyone. We try to focus on core target industries that fit well for our community. As well as the international versus domestic mix, we're at 27% right now, which is pretty strong. We are, I mean, it's hard to market a county internationally. It's hard to market a region internationally. The regional partnership, which we're a member of, their international to domestic mix is 36%. So we're not too far away from where they are. And considering they're marketing Charlotte as a whole, and we're marketing solely Cabarrus County. So we're pretty comfortable with those numbers. We obviously want to grow, grow the total numbers, but having a healthy, a healthy level of activity on the international sector is very important for us. I will be glad to answer any questions, and I think Samantha's going to give you an update on the cost of living and the existing industry program.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. McDaniels.
Thank you.
I'm going to walk you through the next few pages. As Ryan said, the next page is Cost of Living Index. This shows comparison cities, top 37 metro markets, second quarter 2011. You can see Charlotte NC is ranked 10. The Cost of Living full report is in toward the back of the full packet in the appendix, if you would like to read more on that. Lot of data the next few pages, beginning on page 19, Economic Indicators. This is something that staff does monthly. Various resources and sources that are noted here. Cabarrus New Business Development, employment numbers, the unemployment rate for Cabarrus County, taxable sales revenue, housing permits, and vehicle registration. If you have any questions on the economic indicators, I'll be happy to take those. On page-
I appreciate you bringing, putting in the information about the new registered businesses and sort of that kind of track.
Yes, that's on, page 22, that definitely shows the new registered businesses in Cabarrus and also the dissolutions and withdrawals.
What's interesting too is, I saw on the housing permits that compared, where compared this time last year were up, but if you go back three years ago, four years ago, when we were, we were turning, I think, is, you know, I think we had like as many as 200 a month that we were, housing permits that were being issued.
Well, in comparison to light counties, we are much better than the other light counties so that hopefully there's a turnaround there.
Absolutely. Following that page, on page 23, is our list of existing industry visits that have been made by staff from July until September 30. As always, if you know of a business that would benefit us coming in, please let us know. We'd love to, to meet with them.
There are quite, not a whole bunch. There are a handful of businesses that have their headquarters in Japan. Have we seen any positive or negative effects on those businesses locally? In other words, have they got increased manufacturing because of it, or have they had a problem in decreased manufacturing because of the tsunami? Do you know? Okay.
If there's no other questions, I'll pass it over to John, and he'll go over some of the items that are found in the appendix.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, Ms. Honeycutt, Mr. Manager. Thank you for the opportunity we have to be before you tonight. In fact, the picture that is on page 25, which is where my remarks will pick up, is actually from Dine upon. They've gone through their second expansion in the last five years. When the tsunami hit, the next day, we sourced all the companies in Cabarrus County, I think there are only three, there might be four Japanese-based companies. I think I actually sent that list to you as well. And I called each one of them just to say, we can't even imagine what your country's going through at this time. Please know that we're very concerned for your company. If there's any way that we can help, we certainly would. I think that with respect to business going to Japan, I think we've seen some other industry that has come to Cabarrus County because they've been looking at other parts in the world, like Korea. Maybe they were actually in Korea when the tsunami hit and, you know, got shaken up and thought, maybe we ought to eliminate this site and just focus in the state. So, you know, it is such a world economy, we certainly want them back up on their feet as quickly as, as we can. But thank you for the question. This is the Trends Report. It gives you a 12-year synopsis, a snapshot of what's taken place in Cabarrus County. As you know, because we've rehearsed it so many times over the last few years, the United States classifies through a classification system each industry and each business. So what you have before you is the updated NAICS Trends Report that we provided to you the last several years. So on page 27, you'll see the average weekly wage. The interesting thing was, in fourth quarter of '07, we were just $36 off of the statewide average. And you can see during this recession, we've certainly fallen quite a ways, $130-some short of where the state average is. Part of that is the direct impact of Philip Morris closing. We had the second highest manufacturing rate in the state, and they closed. So you'll see that reflected not only in the weekly wages, but when we get to the manufacturing sector, you'll see the number of employees in that part of our economy that really has gone away. On page 27, you'll also see the percentage of total employment in Cabarrus County by all of these different industries, industry sectors. Number one appears to be retail trade, you wouldn't be surprised. Number two, healthcare and social assistance. Again, when you have a medical center that has 4,000 or 5,000 employees alone, you know that medical is very strong. And then you see accommodations and food services, everything from the smallest barbecue place to the most fancy restaurant, hotels, and, and all of that. Next page over, 28, will show you our unemployment rate over that period of time, our labor force, per capita income. And then we just took you through every one of those different classifications. So the very first one, I think they're done alphabetically. Accommodation, food services, percentage of total employment by county, fourth quarter 2010, you can see, we clearly lead the region there. If you just look at exit 49, Concord Mills, the Speedway, the hotels, all of that would be included in that. And we gave you some examples down at the bottom, is something that we've added to this. So Embassy Suites, Afton Tavern, exit 54, and Wendy's at exit 60, all would fall into that category.
I mean, can we stop right there? It, it is good to see that we have those jobs, but it's also can be troubling if we have, if that's too large of the, of the sector or the pie.
Correct. So even when you look at retail and see that we lead the region in retail, and that's great, we love small and large business alike who are doing retail. In, in this country, you still have to produce a product to be the, leading the world economy. So we have to bring manufacturing back. And as much as we appreciate the need for small and local business to grow up from the inside out, we also have to look for manufacturing jobs that are going somewhere in the world. They're going somewhere. And, you know, part of our job is to bring them to Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
You know, as we've talked over the years about whether, when we were doing Great Wolf Lodge, or even the Embassy Suites, there was a concern expressed on the part of some that, you know, the folks who are going to clean the hotel rooms aren't going to make a lot of money. Well, our response to that was, they still need the jobs, and they still need the income that is produced in those jobs, and we need those jobs to make that part of our economy And a couple of pages back, on page 33, you see arts, entertainment, recreation by percentage of total employment by this county. You see it by the region. Again, we lead the region, and you can just simply read through there and, and see why. The kinds of companies included in that would be like Roush Fenway Racing. They currently lead the points race for the cup, so they're bringing in a lot of fans, like they did this last weekend. Charlotte Motor Speedway. And even on the other end of the scale, the Boys and Girls Club of Cabarrus County.
One thing talking about the Charlotte, the Roush Fenway is that I was very, I was amazed that approximately a million people visit the different shops in and around Cabarrus County every year. I mean, I, I was flabbergasted, there was a million people.
Yeah, but when the top drivers are here and they're, you know, in three or four shops around, we get a lot of traffic because of them.
Well, I'm sure this comment will make, I think it creates some, could create some controversy, but it goes to show you why the Hall of Fame should have been up here, not in downtown Charlotte.
The gentleman says.
Well, let Albatross be in Mecklenburg.
Without, well, without us paying for it.
On page 34, Commissioner Carruth, those housing permits that you had mentioned, you see where we were in 2007 with 1,700, and in 2010 with 415.
Wow.
And you can also see what's taken place with respect to the number of people employed in construction and where it is as a percentage of our total economy. You turn the page, you see education. We gave you just some stats. You can see Cabarrus County enrollment by school year, same with Kannapulis City Schools, and the same with Roan Cabarrus Community College. A lot of people might not know that RCC has over 22,000 students, a lot of them in fixed classrooms, and a lot of them night courses or, or online. You can read all about the finance and insurance area, healthcare, information sector. On page 44, management of companies and enterprises. Take a look at that, something like the Action Development Company, something that you don't hear a whole lot about. That's an example. The other page is the manufacturing, and you can see where we rate among the region. We are one of the lowest counties with respect to the percentage of our economy and employment that is engaged in manufacturing. Local examples include Pre-Gel, Tuscaroy Yarns, Whitley Handle Company, and many others. Turning the page, you can see where our employment has gone from the fourth quarter in 1998 of almost 14,000 people employed in this county in manufacturing to just over 5,000 in the fourth quarter of 2010. That's quite a change.
Don't you think it's, that has a lot to do with being wedded to one industry?
Textiles and tobacco.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, so that y'all's efforts to diversify and, and idea, identify other sectors that broaden it will help out, or will help ease that if, if anything happens.
A few pages back, on page 50, you see other services, and all kinds of things are included in there, like Wilkinson Funeral Home, Habitat for Humanity, First Assembly, or any other church. With respect to other services as a percent of the total employment by the county, it looks like we lead the region there as well. And that's a good thing to lead the region, but the place where you really want to lead it is in manufacturing, because you're producing a product, pays higher wages, requires greater skills, pays more taxes. You get the picture. And then on page 56, you see where we are with respect to retail trade. Again, that's great. We love all of our stores, shops, everybody that has a product puts out a shingle, sells something. We lead the region. And I think that gets you down to wholesale trade, and that pretty much takes you through the entire report. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
You know, it does look like, it's interesting that on page 52, that a little over 4% of our total employment is in public administration, which is, we're the third lowest in the region. Mecklenburg is lower than us. Iredell looks like, Iredell and Catalina are about the same, and then we're just a shade higher. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Cox?
John, is there any people that have come in and visited us? Because I know, I've actually timed it, it's about 35 minutes. I don't know how fast you drive from, and how, what traffic's like from Charlotte Douglas International Airport to Concord, where I live at. But I would think the International Business Park is probably only about 20 minutes away. Has that, has that been a selling point? Have we really stressed that as much? Because people, you think of the airport being on the other side of Charlotte, but you don't realize by interstate, you're only 20 minutes away from the airport right there.
The entire Charlotte region, probably in the top two or three is the fact that we have one of the finest international airports in the United States. So we sell it. We sell it as a region, and aviation has actually become a targeted sector because of the strength of Concord Regional, but because of what's going on in Monroe and all these other communities are putting lots of money in to expand and improve their airports. So I think as a region, we get how important air travel is, and Charlotte Douglas is the, is the anchor for us.
Any other questions for Mr. Cox? Thank you very much for providing the information and coming to present it. With that, I don't think we have any other business.
Mr. Chairman, just to let everybody know and announce it, that the Mike Taylor, and maybe people may remember him, he was a Democrat candidate for Congress a couple of times and ran against Robin Hayes. Mike has been associated with PBH for almost 30 years, and he's been over there in all the changes that have taken place there, and has been the corporate counsel and board attorney for PBH for many years, and has done a, just a tremendous job in that role. He is actually, he's taken on a similar role with another LME in Asheville, and with that, he's retiring from PBH as the board attorney. It was basically an hourly thing. He wasn't a full-time employee. He has a practice, but I just wanted to recognize him tonight. His retirement reception will be this week, and he will be going and working with one of the other LMEs with, with their transition of like what we've went through. But I just wanted to mention him tonight, the years of service he's provided to PBH, and, and been a tremendous asset to the organization.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that a couple of weeks ago, I had the distinct pleasure of spending some time with the Sister City folks from Killarney. They came to visit, did a lot of shopping in the area. They had plenty of time here to go to play golf and, I said, do a lot of shopping. We, we enjoyed their visit. I happily have the pen from Killarney. They are the sister city of the City of Concord, and County Manager Downs was kind enough to join us for dinner one night and tried to encourage our relationship with Killarney. I know they're not our sister city, but they're really nice folks, and the mayor of Killarney was here along with the city manager and some other folks from Killarney. And we appreciate having that relationship and them coming to Cabarrus County and encourage anyone that's interested in traveling overseas. If you, you know, are interested in going to Ireland, I would recommend Killarney. And a nice place, nice people. And also encourage people that are interested in reaching out to other cities to investigate the Sister City program that we have and become- the Sister City program that we have, and become involved in that effort. It's nice to reach across the ocean and, and make friends, and it's nice for, for me and my family, it's nice that we can say that we have some friends from Killarney. So, it was a good, good evening, and we enjoyed spending some time with them.
One thing before we close, I do want to call attention to the efforts of David Hampton, as well as Alan Thompson out at the EMS. They've, a couple of things that happened, and I think the commissioners are aware of it, but Will Cannon and Esther Atkins, who are a paramedic team, or, or work in our paramedic office, were named paramedic champions on, last night, at the Carolinas Competition held in Cumberland County in Fort Bragg. This is a competition that included teams from both North and South Carolina, and they won that competition, which my hat's off for Will and Esther for all that they've done. And then also, Mark Kirk and Jeffrey Penninger were the best, selected the best paramedics in North Carolina, and this is at a competition between 36 teams from 24 countries. And if you don't think they treat, have their job, a difficult job, their requirement, their competition was required to rapidly assess and appropriately treat victims of a mock accident that may also include bystanders. In the scenario, they were in a remote wooded area, a hunter was, had fallen from a deer stand, about to die from anaphylactic shock after an allergic reaction to food. And while they're treating him, a person comes up with gunshot wounds, with an arterial bleeding from the leg wound, and a friend's carrying him over. The friend has a heart attack, and they're supposed to treat all of these people within 13 minutes. Now, you know, I think I'd, I'd tap out with the first, but, you know, I do, you know, it just goes to show what David Hampton has done with the EMS and having them prepared for all different efforts and all different scenarios, so that my hat's off to David and Alan Thompson for all that they do, and the great job of Will Cannon and Esther Atkins, as well as Mark Kirk and Jeffrey Penninger. So we have some great people working in the county, and I want to congratulate them. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.